Chair Andre, you can go ahead.
Okay, we're ready? All right, actually let me turn this back around, sorry. Uh, okay, so, item one, we'll call, call to order. Uh, the meeting for April, um, I don't even know what the, April 22nd, 2020. A virtual meeting, I guess. Um, then a roll call?
Chair Andre?
Here.
Vice Chair Gross?
Here.
Commissioner Cokey?
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt?
Here.
Commissioner Lo?
Here.
Commissioner Riley? Where do you go? Here? Did he leave?
Did he sign in, Riley?
Yes, he signed out. Um, Commissioner Cokey?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Yeah, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is the nation's one nation, indivisible, with every being just as it is. Okay. Uh, item number four, oral communications, do, do I need to read that at this time, or?
I will go ahead and read it. Um, as listed in the agenda, the public was requested to email comments by 4:00 P.M., but no comments were received, so requests to verbally deliver comments were to be sent to the same as listed on the agenda, but no requests were received.
Okay. So, we can now move to item six, which is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry? So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Oh.
Aye.
And against, I abstain.
Oh, who was the second, sorry?
Oh, I think it was, was it Art?
Art.
I seconded it, Art.
So we need to do a roll call for every action, so let me go ahead and do that. Chair Andre?
Here.
Vice Chair Gross?
Approve.
Commissioner Cokey?
There.
Commissioner DeBolt?
Here.
Commissioner Lo?
Here, approve, approve.
Commissioner Ruffey is?
Thought we did that.
Commissioner Cokey?
Uh, here, approve.
Okay.
Uh, if you got that, I abstain.
Oh, got it. Abstained.
Oh, that was a vote. I thought, okay, roll call vote, all right.
Yeah. Okay, uh, moving on, item number seven, consent calendar, we have none. And we move to item eight A, which is a public hearing, Z O A 19-02 and 19-03. This is, uh, state mandated updates to family daycare homes and accessory dwelling units, uh, A D U regulations. Can we get a staff report on this?
Sure. Chair Andre and members of the Planning Commission and Subdivision Committee, Z O A 1902 and 1903, are the consideration of a resolution recommending that the city council adopt ordinances to, to amend the Los Alamitos Municipal Code to address recent changes in state law concerning the regulation of accessory dwelling units, which are also known as A D Us, and then large family daycare homes. Uh, the state bills concerning these became effective on January 1st, 2020. Uh, therefore, the city is already subject to the provisions of these bills. And in the December 2019 Planning Commission meeting, our residents have intended to approve by commissioners asking the staff bring back draft ordinances for consideration of, uh, recommendation to the city council. Uh, those ordinances are presented tonight. Uh, the first one, Z O A 1902, is the Exhibit A in your packet. Uh, it's the ordinance. And it is for accessory dwelling. Uh, attachment two to your staff report, which is toward the end, provided a comparison of the city's current A D U provision with staff recommendations. The changes identified in the draft ordinance for accessory dwelling units, um, with those, the city would continue to allow for staff approval of A D Us in single-family zones, but now also in multi-family zones as well. And it also makes changes to the ordinance such as, uh, our A D U ordinance, such as multiple, uh, uh, in, uh, you can have multiple units. A D Us can be located in an attached garage, storage area, or other accessory structure. Uh, if parking is removed for the A D U, the city may not require the parking to be replaced. Setbacks are reduced. Uh, the city may not require the owner occupancy on the parcel. Uh, and it prevents HOAs from enforcing any C C N Rs and rules that restrict the construction of accessory dwelling unit or junior A D U home zone for single-family residential use. Uh, and then the second one, Z O A 1903, which is ordinance B in your agenda, concerns la, large family daycare homes. And state law removes the difference between small family daycare homes and large family daycare homes. It requires cities to treat large family daycare homes as a use of residential property by right, which means is permitted, in residential zoning districts, and that's permitted without a C U P, uh, conditional use permit. And staff recommends that the commissioners open pub, the public hearing, take testimony, and discuss any questions concerning these changes in the code. And if appropriate, approve the draft resolution of recommendation to the city council, uh, for these draft ordinances. And remember, they are draft ordinances, you can make changes to them still, uh, before you recommend them to the city council. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. So, at this point, uh, we will open up the public hearing and, uh, take testimony, although I don't know that we're able to do that, are we? I guess via telephone?
Um, we did not receive any requests through the public hearing.
Okay. Uh, so, this time, do I leave it, well, I guess you like to close the public hearing then and bring it back to the commission to discuss?
Correct.
Okay? Any comments or questions, concerns?
You have a question for the, uh, yeah, I have a question, either for, for the attorney or staff.
Go ahead.
What is, what is the, what is the difference? What is different in our, uh, proposed ordinance, uh, between what's in the ordinance and what is the, what is the state law? In other words, why are we? What, 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 what items are different? Other than, other than the state, uh, sets a limit of 1,000 square feet on, on units greater than one bedroom, and we're allowing 1,200?
Yeah, I'll tell you, um, in many respects, the ordinance before you is a recitation of the state law. And that's the result of the recent state amendments, which largely prohibit the city from really regulating these uses. It is nevertheless useful to have an ordinance in place, however, because our existing ordinance conflicts with the state law at the moment, which could lead to subsequent actions in the future from the Attorney General. Um, an updated ordinance is also useful in providing guidance to community members who want to understand what is our protocol, what is our approach, and how are these items permitted in the city without them ha, having to default to the state code per se. As I've said, the state law really does limit our ability to impose any sort of stringent regulations or discretionary review authority for these types of uses, but nevertheless, it does provide some avenues to determine maximum unit sizes for determining, uh, you know, we preserve spacing requirements that were a carry forward from our prior code, which would not exist if we just default to the state codes. And we've also been able to state that A D Us would be limited to no more than two bedrooms in our jurisdiction, which is something that would not necessarily follow if you default to the state code. So, to answer your question in a roundabout way, there's not a whole lot of daylight between the mandatory standards of the state code. Um, we've tried to move forward with what restrictions we can impose, and we've also tried to prepare, provide a format that is more accessible and more understandable to the reader in Los Alamos who tries to get a sense of how they would proceed with one of these projects. I know that you all received a copy of the state law, the government code, today, as amended, and it is not the easiest document to read and follow in terms of what would the process be for applying for and getting approval of these types of uses. So, it's somewhat of a long response to your question, and, and, and the bulk of the question really is there's not, frankly, a whole lot of difference between what the state says our code has to include and what we have included. There's, there's very few areas in the state law now where the state statutes have said, this is an area where the city can exercise some control or regulation.
Just to follow on, if you don't mind, uh, when you said, when you said spacing, we can retain spacing, what, what is that?
That's a reference to our existing code as a provision stating that there has to be a minimum space of 10 feet between an A D U and an existing primary dwelling, so that you don't have the structures in too close of proximity to one another. Um, that's an example of something that we are able to carry forward from our existing regulations that's not preempted by state law.
What does the state law say?
State law is silent on the spacing requirement, and so again, that's one area where we are able to move forward. Uh, the bulk of the state law are recitals about things you must include in your ordinance or things you can't do, so.
Okay. Um. The, uh... Well, that's the only, that's all I have for right now.
Okay.
If somebody else wants to ask a question.
So, I, I've got a question in regards to that spacing requirement. Would that preclude somebody convert, from converting an attached garage into an A D U?
No, this would be for, the most direct example would be if someone came in planning a new detached accessory dwelling unit. Um, if you're converting an existing accessory structure that was permitted and approved previously, um, the code would not require someone, for example, to move an existing carport for additional feet from a home to hit that 10-foot mark.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, uh, Michael, for the record, I, I know that, um, that we're required to pass, uh, an ordinance, pursuant to the ordinance, uh, passed by the state, is that correct?
Well, if, if you fail to enact an ordinance, the default is the state law. The state law contains an authorization saying cities may enact ordinances, and if you do, it has to follow the specific guideposts, which is what we have before you now. So if we had no ordinance in effect, we could default to the state. Our problem, and perhaps problem's not the right word, but we have an existing A D U ordinance that conflicts with current state law, so we either update it to reflect the existing law, which is what is before you now, um, and attempt to preserve whatever rights we have to oversee these applications, or we would have to rescind our existing A D U provisions with an acknowledgement that we're just going to let the state law govern on its face.
I understand, I understand, the original, our original ordinance is based upon a law passed in 2017, I think. And I understand that in, uh, January 1st, 2020, they set this new, new requirements board. We're trying to comply with those, so we've seen the need, uh, to, to obtain the density that we want, we would try to set this up with the most narrow and stringent, um, interpretation in state law, instead of, for instance, instead of going to a maximum of a, a 1,200, let's go to, back to where the state was, keep it as small as we can. And with regard to the distancing, what you just talked about, uh, if it's silent, why, why are we at 10 feet? I've, I've looked at some other cities' ordinances, and there's one ordinance, I think it's 40 feet. So, again, why don't we make our ordinance as, uh, narrow as we can to keep the density as low as we can?
Yeah, um, so, to answer that, the, the 1,200-foot maximum unit size that's in the ordinance was a carryover from the existing ordinance.
But we can amend that, we're.
We can, so.
Why do we make it down instead of?
If it's, if it's the will of the Planning Commission on that particular point, for example, uh, we could move approval with a recommendation to council that that limit be put to 1,000, which is the most stringent measure we could impose. Um, to answer your question on spacing, it's a similar answer. The 10-foot spacing requirement was in our existing code, so it was brought forward. We can give that a different number if you'd like. I would caution the commission, however, that the state law does say if we impose requirements that make it otherwise impractical or impossible to develop A D Us as specified, that that's an issue. So, if, if we enacted a further distance requirement, and it's interpreted to be a move intended solely just to limit these things, um, I would expect pushback from the state. This ordinance will, in whatever form it takes, will be sent to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, who will have an opportunity to comment and suggest amendments. And based on their guidance, will be put in a position of deciding whether or not we choose to amend, you know, consistent with their guidance. And if, so I guess my point of saying that is that whatever numbers we choose, we need to be cognizant of the fact that there will be a, a secondary layer of review, and we want to make sure that whatever limitations we're putting in here, you know, I understand the desire to make this as restrictive as possible, um, but the counterbalance of that is you don't want it to appear as an attempt to be overly restrictive or prohibit these uses.
Understood, we can make it as strict and as narrow as possible within the, within the parameters of the law. And, you know, to have a static number like 10 feet, uh, make, doesn't really make sense, because the land, the lot size in this city varies drastically from neighborhood to neighborhood. So, uh, some of the larger lots can probably, uh, have a greater spacing than some of the smaller lots. Can we, can we, can we justify our decision based upon some kind of formula that we've created that, that, uh, will show that we're not being, uh, obstructive, but we're, we're following the, 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 the letter of the law? I just think we should, we should make it as tight as we can without violating the, the, uh, spirit of the law.
Yeah, I, I think there could be a basis for that. Um, again, you know, frankly, the 10-foot limit, it was carried forward. I'm not sure what the discussion was when that initially went in. Um, that said, if we're going to change the number, I'm open to that. Uh, I would just ask for, uh, Leslie and Tom to help me understand in terms of drafting what a workable formula is, understanding what the lot sizes are throughout the city, um, so that we can explain the basis for that limit.
Thank you. I have something more, but it's kind of carries into the other, uh, agenda item, so I'm going to hold on to that till, till we kind of approach that discussion.
Okay.
I have a question, again. I'll wait to let somebody else just. Let's come in. Regarding the 10-foot, uh, I don't see the, I don't see any, uh... I act, I don't see any need for any, putting any distance in there. If a person's going to build his A D U, he has to have sufficient space to, uh, you know, to access it or get between it, uh, between the two buildings. I mean, whether it's three feet, five feet, even whether it's just a foot, uh, if it's, in my opinion, I, what, what's the purpose? Uh, it's, 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 if, if they build it, it's going to be, uh, it's, if it hurts anything, it hurts their property, if, if it's not done right. Even though they can squeeze a unit in there, uh, if they, if they, if they make it too close, that's their problem. Why, I'm just trying to, I... I, I'd say just leave it with the state, that, uh, you know. So, I mean, I'm, but whatever, I mean, I'm... Why, why get carried away with the formula? They're, they're required to be four feet away on all three sides, you know, on the, uh, on the side, rear yards. They want to be four feet from the, the, the structure, who cares? At, at this point, you're decimating a, a neighborhood anyway, so, uh, if they want to shove a box in the back of their, of their property, i- it's not going to change how the front looks, and, uh... So, anyway, that's my thought.
I'm, uh, I mean, I'm under the guise of, of, that would require a change as well, kind of under the guise of just leaving it at the 10 feet, um, since it's already there?
Yeah.
And just rolling that. Um, as far as the 1,200 and the 1,000 square feet, we're taking it down, uh, I'm under the guise of leaving that as well, because at that point, whether it's 1,000 or 1,200, they're more than likely going to build it. And if they're going to build it, you may as well allow them with what's in there to go with the extra 200 feet, so there's a, a little bit more there. It doesn't, it, it's 200, dropping it 200 feet isn't really going to preclude anybody from, from building it, at this point in my eyes, if, if they were going to do it. So, since it's already in there at 1,200, I just, again, feel like it should probably just be left at that.
Well, at 1,200, you'd get a three-bedroom, at, uh, at 1,000, you'd get, you'd get a two.
It's, it says it can only be a one-bedroom, right?
Yeah, the, the code, the code only allows up to a two-bedroom A D U as, as before you right now.
But with, with, yeah, so regardless if it's 1,000 or, or 1,200.
Can I comment on that?
What's the state?
I'm sorry, what's the state?
Well, I'm sorry, I, I stepped on Victor.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just want to make a point on that 1,000 to 1,200 again. It says, we, we limit it to 1,000, uh, it's going to discourage the, the development of two bedrooms, and, and the less bedrooms you have, the less vehicles you have. I mean, on the, on the condo conversions, we review routinely, we have that one and a half car spaces for a bedroom. Here, there's nothing, uh, that's wide open. Uh, there used to be, you couldn't park in a driveway, because that was a driveway. Now you can park in a driveway, because it's called tandem parking. Um, when we review the condo conversions, we have to allow certain amount of, uh, area for open space. Uh, that's all gone, so if we don't try to control density by whatever means the state has left open to us, then, uh, I see some problems in the future. And again, I have another issue here, but I'll wait till we start touching on the, uh, daycare, uh, topic, and then I'll, I'll, I'll highlight that then. But I think we should take an opportunity to consider density here.
I, I see what you're saying. Um, however, I think if somebody's in it for profiting, as far as creating something to, to profit, I don't really think they're going to care if, if it's listed at, you're, are you saying they can still do a two-bedroom with 1,000 square feet, right?
Yes, I hear it, Michael.
But, Michael, if, if, if we were to change it to 1,000 square feet, can they still build it as a two-bedroom?
Yes.
So, the guy who's trying to profit from it probably doesn't care that he's shaving 100 feet, square feet off of each, uh, piece, if he's going to make it a two-bedroom and try to rent them out separately. Um, or, for that matter, um, I, you know, I just, I don't, I don't see that it's, it's, it's going to deter anybody, that extra 200 feet, I don't, I don't see. And so, let's say you have a legitimate use for it, where there's somebody whose mother is, has Alzheimer's, and the person decides they don't want to put him in a home, um, but they have the ability to put them in their, at their house, you know, where they can still have their, you know, freedom, if you will, and, and live in a place on their own. Um, and you're shaving off that extra 200 feet, I mean, there's, there's that side of it as well.
Well, you know, to follow up on that, I'm not, I'm not looking to support the guy that's trying to make a profit. I'm looking to support or, or, or back an ordinance that promotes, uh, the quality of life in the community at large. Uh, and I frankly think this whole ordinance will not do that. I frankly think this whole ordinance is going to diminish the quality of life in this neighborhood, the safety and, uh, welfare of, of, of the citizens of this neighborhood. I think it's a poorly written, drafted, and thought-out ordinance in whole. But I understand, uh, our, our requirement to, and I appreciate Michael's, uh, work and diligence in putting this before us, but, um, I think he had little to work with, and I appreciate, again, what he's done, but I just think it's, uh, poorly thought-out ordinance, and not Michael's, the, the state ordinance. And, uh, I think we need to, uh, think about the health, safety, and welfare of the community when we, when we, uh, put something nice forward, not the worst.
I don't, I, I don't discount your thought process there. What I'm looking at is that we didn't really have, I mean, we didn't have a choice because of what the state is throwing out there. So, I mean, I'm not going to argue at the labor, because I agree with you with respect to the ordinance as a whole being an issue, but, but the fact of the matter is, we have to do something. And so, I just was throwing out the point that I don't think bringing it down 200 is going to, um, really make a, a, a positive difference in my, in my opinion. That, that was all, I, I agree with you on, on the sentiment that it's not, it's not ideal, but we have to do something.
I, I have one question for, uh, for Michael regarding the, the bedroom count, a two-bedroom. The state is silent on whether you go, on how many bedrooms you put in, you can, it's just anything over one bedroom, correct? The maximum is 1,000?
The, the maximum is 1,000 for up to two bedrooms.
For up to two bedrooms? Okay, and, uh...
Got to find them. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can they go over two bedrooms?
Well, the, what the state law says is, so, um, there's a maximum of 1,000 square feet for an accessory dwelling unit that provides more than one bedroom.
Right, more than one bedroom.
Right, and so what we've said is, we've applied the 1,200 for two bedrooms, and tried to cap it at two.
So, is that going to, what's the chance of that being challenged by, by the state? I mean, you're putting a limit of two-bedroom, basically, when, when the state is open-ended, just beyond, going beyond one bedroom?
Yeah, I would characterize that as one area where I think we do have some control. I mean, it's, it's stated as a cap on units with more than one bedroom. We've allowed for more than one bedroom. I don't see anything in the state law that would compel us to say, look, if you can get four bedrooms into 1,200 square feet, have fun. And I think that's, again, one area where we can try to draw some sort of limit. And it's consistent with what I'm seeing in other jurisdictions as well.
Okay. I have another question, but I'll wait if anybody else wants to chime in at this point.
I have more also, but I'll, I'll cede the floor to somebody else.
All right, I'll start, I'll start at the mic. My, uh, Michael, this goes to, uh, the findings on this, uh, in the ordinance on section two, page two. Uh, we have three findings, A, B, and C. Are we required to come up with affirmative findings that, uh, I mean, in, in light of the fact that basically what we're, what we're setting up to do is ghettoize our neighborhoods, which is what the state wants to do, we, we, we basically eliminate the R1 nature, these are all now, all now multifamily, which, in my opinion, will have a deleterious effect on the quality of life and in, in this, you know, in, in the neighborhoods. So regarding these findings, are we required to make a finding that the ordinance will not be detrimental to public convenience, to help? not be detrimental to public convenience, to health, interest, safety, or welfare of the city, and that it would not create any inconsistencies with our zoning codes, which it does?
Yeah.
And against the actions of our general plan? I mean, do we have to have those findings, or can we, can we approve without it?
I would recommend approving with them, because the Muni Code says that any zoning code amendment must be supported by these three findings. So, that's not to say there aren't arguments against. What we've tried to do is put together some skeleton-level findings that can at least support and go through the requirements of the code. You'll see, for example, in finding B, which, which you referred to with respect to the detriment to public health and so forth, I mean, if you read that, that one's somewhat hedging itself, has language embedded in it, saying, you know, to the extent we're allowed by this code.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, we're, we're going to hose you over, and, and so therefore, to the maximum that we hose you over, you're not any worse off than how we're, how we're messing you up. So, I, you know, personally, I, I have a problem with this. I mean, conscience-wise, I'm not, to me, it's a false, it's a false finding. I mean, at least for me, anyway, to vote on it, I, I say we, we just scrap our, our existing ADU plan, and then we, we just adopt, as difficult as it may be for the person coming across the counter to follow the state code, then just leave it at that. It's that difficult. And then, then they can deal with our staff, you know, trying to deal with it. That's my, that's my initial take on this at the moment, so. I mean, we're, you know, we're in the middle of an epidemic right now, and the only reason California probably has less than New York is because of our density. And here we are, you know, attempting to pile on more people into, into the neighborhoods, and, and even into the apartments in the multifamily. I, I've got a 10-unit building, you know, and I've got, I've got, I've got 10 outside spaces and 10 garages. The way I read this, I can, I can, I can scrap, I can literally demolish four of my garages and build, and build another two units on a property that, that, right now, I could only do eight. I mean, you, you talk about, about, it's not only the single-family areas, it's, it's the multifamily areas. I mean, the whole complexion, the whole, the whole character of our city, and it's not just our city, it's all the cities statewide, you know, all, all because, you know, somebody's got a harebrained idea that, that this is going to help on a, on a, on a housing shortage. You know, it's created by them. I mean, and, and for me to make a finding that's false, I'm, you know, that's where I'm at.
Now, the, the one thing I would add, and I don't know if Leslie and Tom have more insight onto this, but although the state statute references maximum sizes of 850 square feet for, you know, a studio or one-bedroom, or 1,000 square feet for an ADU that provides more than one bedroom, it's not clear from reading the statute that those limitations would apply if you have not brought forward an ordinance that permanently establishes those maximum-size units. So, one reason to move forward with an ordinance that actually codifies these limits is that you can hold people to that. You could potentially face the argument from a developer moving forward that, hey, you don't have an ordinance in place. I realize that the state law says you can enact an ordinance to impose these caps, but you haven't, and so I want to move forward with a, a four-bedroom, whatever, 2,500 square feet unit, and there's nothing that you can enforce locally that says I cannot do that.
You have the state law.
State law, when, when we talk about those caps of 800 and 1,000, again, that's, that's discussed within the context of local agencies can enact ordinances, but here's the maximum size they can impose limits on. So, what I'm saying to you is, it does not necessarily follow that those state law caps will apply if you do not enact an ordinance yourself. So, I think there's value, if nothing else, in bringing forward an ordinance that says, here's our maximum size, and as we discussed previously, we're saying you can only do two bedrooms in our city.
So, so Art, i- in that regard, it, it makes it, being able to make those findings, right, becomes more possible, right? Because, he's right, the ordinance says the maximum size may not be less than 850 square feet. It doesn't say the maximum size may not be more than. So, we can impose that, we can impose the more-than language, but the state law does not. So, so this is our opportunity to do that, and that, that alone is, could be seen as justification to be able to make some of the findings that you're concerned about, that, hey, if we, if we don't pass this ordinance and limit the sizes of these ADUs, then we're exposed to, to much bigger potential problems with, around density, right?
I'm not reading it right. I don't think he read those maximums right.
I, I just, I mean, I just read it right here, in the, I mean, it's in, it's in what we have here.
Where?
Um, it's in the agenda.
Three or four. That's incorrect, three or four is incorrect, I believe, Mr. Attorney.
Three, when you're referring to three or four, are we talking about the ordinance? Are we talking about the, the statute?
The agenda item, the staff report.
Page three or four on the, on the agenda.
Okay, let me find that.
So, what, why do you think it's incorrect, Art?
It's the way you phrased it. The maximum size cannot be less than 850 feet. That means the maximum is 850 feet for a studio unit, for, it's a maximum. And, or 1,000 square feet for, for an ADU that provides more than one bedroom. So, the cap is 1,000 square feet for, for anything over one bedroom, and I presume that could even be up to three, or four, or five, if you can fit it into 1,000 square feet. And if you're not doing, if you're doing, going to do a one-bedroom, then the maximum size is a 850, 850 square feet, if you're, if you're going to be one-bedroom or less.
I wasn't reading it that way either.
I have a...
It's the maximum size is what they're laying out there. The maximum size cannot be less than 850 square feet, okay? Or 1,000 square feet. You can't, your maximum cannot be less than a certain number.
Right.
They're establishing the restriction.
And my, my point is, this is our opportunity to establish the restriction. So, we can't impose something that's less than 850 or 1,000, but if we don't do anything, arguably, you have not imposed a limitation.
But the state law gives you the limitation.
The state law, when it's speaking to the 800 or 1,000, is talking in terms of what our restrictions are when we enact an ordinance that imposes limitations.
Otherwise, it could be up like a 2,000 square. That's just talking about the minimum.
So, what does the code say? What, what does the code say?
I have the code right here.
Respect to size?
Here.
What's the language of the code, then? If this is not the language of the code, then what's, what's in the code? The state code?
I have it right here.
Read it. Excuse me?
Okay, I have, okay, I'm looking at the, the Westlaw Internet California Code. This is Government Code, Section 65852.2. It's on page four, and Michael, this is what he was referring to, and this is what everybody's, I don't know what the argument is, I think we all agree. This says that local agency, blah, 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 maximum square footage, this is under section B, action square footage for attached or detached, as less than either the following, 850 square feet, or 1,000 square feet for an accessory dwelling, provides more than one bedroom. So, that is the state code. So, my question, rolling back to my original question, why are we staying with the state code? Why are we getting something bigger? Let's stay with the 850 and 1,000.
Okay, so, to, to answer that question, the 1,200 was what was established previously when the city enacted its ADU.
Right, but we're amending that one.
And we can. If you would like, if it's your preference to go down, we can do that.
It's my preference to go down, for the record.
Well, I guess I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to get past this assertion that the state code doesn't say what it says. Okay, the, the attorney is telling us that, that you read the state code, Victor just read it, and he's telling us unless we enact something, unless we parrot it back in our own code, we can't rely on the state code, right? I mean, you're saying that it does, that, that they can just do whatever, the guy can come in and want to do 2,000 square feet, and if we point out that the state code says 1,000, or, you know, then, then we have to roll over on that? We have, we have to permit that when the state code says 1,000, simply because we didn't enact our own ordinance?
Well, I think we're going round and round here. Why don't we just enact our ordinance with the 850 and 1,000? That way, we've, we've made a statement, and we've, we've made a decision. We're not relying on the state code, we're relying on our code, we're relying on our, our ordinance, but we're, we're making it as tight as the state allows, which is 850 and 1,000. I think, I think we're all in agreement here on that, unless somebody wants to get bigger.
What about, what about the, what about the findings?
Well, I, I can't, can I, with the, with the chair's permission, could I, I know we're talking about ADUs here, and there's JADUs, and there's the, the healthcare. Could I, could I leapfrog into one of the other ones, just to make a point here?
Yeah, it's, it's under the same, we're under the same item number, right? Yeah, there's no issue with it all, but yeah.
Okay, let, let's go to our staff report, page four, for daycare homes, Senate Bill 234 Skinner. So, basically, they've, they've removed the distinction between small and large daycare homes, so now you can have up to 14 children in a daycare home. So, think about this hypothetical. You put two ADUs in your backyard, call them each a daycare, now you've got 28 kids back there. I cannot see how that cannot affect the quality of life to your neighbors. So, I don't know how I can make, I don't know I can make the findings here. I don't know that I can put my name on something that says it doesn't affect the quality of life in the neighborhood, when you're going to theoretically allow them, put two structures in there, and put 14 children in there, and during daytime, they're going to be out playing and screaming and yelling, and I don't see how that can't affect the guy on the other side of that six-foot wall. So, I don't think I can, I don't think I can find a finding. I don't think I can agree with the findings here. I just can't. And, Michael, this has nothing to do with you. I know you're, you're, you're limited on what you got to work with, but I just, I just find that the canvas that you were given was flawed, and, and I know you're trying to do your best with it, but the, the state just gave us something very terrible.
The sad part is, if you look at the safety that goes around putting that many kids in a small dense area like that, if there was a fire or anything, we just had a major disaster.
Well, there's a lot of gaps in here that haven't been thought out. What if you have a JADU in your garage, and you have a tenant there, and you want to sell your house? What are you going to fix them? I think the state just passed an ordinance as you can, Victor. So, we're, we're just, we're just going down a road of nightmares here with this thing. Again, Michael, I know you're not human.
That's fine, that's fine, I understand.
And you, and you follow on to what Wendy just said, when the lawsuit hits, and they come back and look, well, who approved this? Oh, we approved it, we found, we made findings that this would not impact, have no negative impact on quality of life or anything, and, and complied with all health and safety. The state is shifting that burden to us. Let the state live with that. When, when this, when this thing hits the fan, you know, I don't want my name on it, I don't want to be, I'm, I'm not going to make a false finding that, that this isn't, is not detrimental to the health, safety, and, and welfare of the city, or, and, or the neighborhoods that they're in. Just let, go with the state ordinance, and let, and let, let, we live with it with the state. I mean...
No, I think we draft our own, but we keep it as tight. We can make it tighter than the state, Art, well, not tighter than the state, but we can make it as tight as the state allows, and I think we should do that. But...
And make your findings.
Have one of ours in place, because Michael said that we don't have one in place, then there's, it's, it opens opportunity for interpretation. So, I think we draft one as tight as we can, and then, and I think, Michael, if we do, if we do, we have to do this. I didn't see anything about, about the, the appearance of the, of the ADU. I've read some other cities' ordinances, and they, they talk about, you know, having consistent roof lines, and, in other words, the buildings look similar. I think if we're going to go forward with this, which we have to, I think we should start looking about the aesthetics also.
Yeah, if I, if I could respond to that real quick, part of what the state law does say is that these applications have to be approved ministerial without any discretionary review from the city. So, if you start imposing standards like, that you see in other codes, things like, oh, must maintain the single-family appearance of the neighborhood, must have whatever, continuity between the facade of the primary dwelling, and anything like that that looks like a design review standard is not going to get past the state, unfortunately. I mean, we, we could put it in there, but I think that ultimately gets kicked back, and when you're issuing a ministerial approval, you're not really in a position to make sort of those, those qualitative judgment calls on a development proposal. It's more of a, you know, a zero-sum hit-or-miss list. Does it check the boxes? Is it, is it the right size? Does it have the right setbacks? Is there going to be parking required? Does it meet the parking? And you go through that checklist, but, but unfortunately, under the state law, there's not an opportunity to say, well, let's, let's take a second here and talk about how we would like to see the architecture shift a little bit. I mean, that's, that's what we've been able to do in the past with other types of development, when you have a, a design review, but unfortunately, under the state law, they're just saying, hey, we're removing what we see as obstacles to getting these units in the ground as quick as possible to help address housing shortages. And so, they, they pull that ability away from us.
So, let me, so let me ask you, if you were to, if you were to craft an ordinance that, that basically relied on the state, but then lists, and, and, and those, you know, we're relying on the state and the state terms, and those terms are, those conditions are, and then you list, just like you did here, bullet point, right on down the line. In essence, you're, you're, you're playing back the state code within an ordinance that's ours. But it's just my way of explanation, and we're not making any findings on this that's not detrimental. It's just, the state code is this, we're going to adopt the state code, and these are the, these are the following restrictions. Minimum, you know, 800, max 850, max 1,000. Just, just play it right on down.
I mean, frankly, that's what the ordinance does do. If you track the two side by side, you can go through with a check mark and read where the, where the state law says the ordinance shall contain the following standards. You read our ordinance, there's, it runs through. I think the ordinance that's before you...
I, I understand that, but it's, it's the findings. I'm having heartburn with the findings, having to, having to look my neighbor in the eye and say, yeah, yeah, we approved this, but guess what? It's not going to affect our neighborhood. Doesn't affect your quality of life, because you've got 28 kids here now, or that you have, you know, you, you know, we've got a, you know, a half a dozen people in here starting to build. They bought the houses, and now they're going to build in the back, and they're going to turn them into, you know, adult sober living facilities that we can't control. You know, I mean, it's...
So, with respect to the findings, I'm trying to recall if your resolution of recommendation recites the same findings. Let me take a look here.
Yes. Well, I mean, I read it, but I'm reading it in the ordinance.
So, here's the resolution. So, if, if collectively the commission is not comfortable with those findings being made, I think you could nevertheless make a recommendation to the city council that they consider adoption of the ordinance, but noting that the planning commission was uncomfortable with the findings as specified in the ordinance. And unwilling, that, that the planning kit commission would not...
Approve the findings.
Affirmatively make those findings, but is cognizant of the need to enact updated standards based on recent changes in state law. Something to that effect, which would allow you to voice your concern with respect to the findings in the draft ordinances, but nevertheless making a recommendation up to the council for them to consider when they, in turn, look at the ordinances proposed.
I don't have a problem with that. Put, put, put that decision up to them.
And they may well have the same concern, and maybe it comes down to having to massage... And they may well have the same concern, and maybe it comes down to having to massage those findings or having stronger language about how this is being done in direct response to the state's actions, as opposed to, you know, a low, a pure local initiative, but nevertheless, here it is.
All right, I like that.
Can I ask a question of, Michael, I think I'm reading this differently than Art is. The part where it says the maximum size may not be less than 850 square feet, in my mind, it means it could be as big as they want.
Say that again, I'm sorry?
Where, where, this is back to page three or four in the summary. It said the maximum size may not be less than 850 square feet, or 1,000 square feet for a one-bedroom.
Right.
My mind, I see that it could be 2,000 square feet, right?
No.
Like, you're saying the maximum size can't be less than 850.
Yeah, we, we could, by ordinance, we could say studio ADUs may be up to 1,500 square feet, and 200, or, or in two-bedroom ADUs, maybe 3,000 square feet. We could, we could have a maximum size.
So the draft ordinance that we have, it says the maximum size of a detached or attached ADU is 850 square feet for a studio or one-bedroom, and 1,200 square feet unit for a two-bedroom, which I'm totally fine with, I'm not okay with what the summary says of, it's, it can't be less than 850. That means they could build it as big as they want. If we, if we go with the state how it says now, it seems like they could, they could build a 2,000-square-foot in their backyard.
No, they can't be less than eight, the maximum cannot be less than 850, we can't make maximum less than.
It can't be less, so, so the maximum has to be 850 or more. If we don't put a cap on the max, they could build a 3,000-square-foot in their backyard, or am I completely misunderstanding this?
I, I think there is the ambiguity there, and I think the statute includes a floor on what we can impose as the cap. Wait, gosh, that was a terrible sentence, I apologize. What the state law is saying is that to the extent we want to create a maximum unit size, it has to be at least 850 for one-bedrooms or studios.
Right, that's, that's...
Below that number, and likewise for 1,000 square feet on the larger units.
And that's how I'm reading it, but if we don't, if we don't do it and put in our own max, they could build however big they can fit. We want to have a max, so they're not building a humongous thing in their backyard.
And again, if you look at the government code, maximums 850 and 1,000 for a one-bedroom, did you get that? Um, it was sent to us.
Yeah.
Not, not to change the, um...
But read it, can you read it again, Victor? I, I can't bring it up, Mike.
All right, it's page four, Tom, you might have it.
Yeah, it's, it says...
It says the bottoms, uh, this is, uh, C1, 2, A and B. It says a maximum square footage requirement for either an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit that is less than either of the following. One, 800 square, 850 square feet, B or two, 1,000 square feet for an accessory dwelling unit that provides more than one bedroom.
So, Victor, uh, what's, what's getting missed there is, up, up above that, it says, notwithstanding paragraph one, a local agency shall not establish by ordinance any of the following. And then it gives that language, right? So we cannot establish an ordinance that limits the maximum square footage to less than 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet.
Right, so we can go there.
So, we can limit it to that, but, but if we don't limit it to that, then, then per what, what the city attorney is saying, if we don't limit it, then they could come in and say, hey, I want to do a 2,000-square-foot.
That's been, that's been my point, let's, let's go with this state numbers and put them in our ordinance.
I, I agree with that, I, I see what you're saying, uh, Marianne.
Okay. You know, what I'm seeing on the wording, when you look under unit size and height A, the way that one reads doesn't read as the same as the one that's on page three of four under the accessory dwelling units on the discussion. So the one on the discussion on page three says maximum size may not be less than 850 square feet, et cetera, but the one under unit size says the maximum size of a detached or ADU is... So you're, the two are phrased enough differently that they conflict each other from what I'm reading.
Right, but that's because that's our ordinance that we're gonna be...
Right, right.
Yeah, so that's what we want.
Yep.
That's what I want, let me put it that way.
Marianne, you want the 850, 1,000 written in our ordinance?
Yes.
So do I. Hey, to, to go back to my...
So would I.
Can I, can we go, Michael?
Yes, sir.
What's regarding the design standards, and I, and I, I didn't read the entire ordinance, so I'm sure that you're correct, but I was looking at another city's ordinance, and they have, under one, I don't know what city it is, uh, under the code section 1738050, development standards, and they have in there that, um, section, section five, it says the color, material, texture of view, the exterior walls, ventilation, architectural features, blah, 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 the roof pitch of a second unit shall match roof pitch of a primary dwelling unit. So this is an ordinance being enforced by another city, so I, again, I defer to your professional reading of the ordinance, but why don't we put it in? If they throw it out, then they throw it out.
That's, that is something that the commission can consider. Um, again, I've, I've explained that the basis for our, my concern in drafting it was the limitation on discretionary review, so you, you won't be able to, you know, perhaps that provides some guidance to someone submitting an application in terms of what expectations are. Where it becomes problematic is, you won't necessarily be given an opportunity to say, hey, our code says the facade should match, and we don't think this stucco goes well with what, what the single-family residence has on the facade. We won't be able to make that, we won't be able to have those arguments under...
Well, and another thing too, and, and again, I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but it seems like this is, the point is, we're talking about spacing before, uh, and it was 10 feet, that was a discussion, I think it should be greater, but, okay, is that, if somebody comes and says ministerial, they come to the counter and say, okay, it's 10 foot from this wall to this wall, we're, but, but they, but the, but the roof pitches are, are now 8 feet or 7 feet, so we need to be more definitive of, of things like that. In other words, if we're gonna say spacing is that wall-to-wall, roof pitch-to-roof pitch, patio-to-patio, because if this is gonna be decided at the counter, we have to give our staff as much ammunition to make consistent decisions as we can. And I think there's a lot of ambiguity in, in this right now, I'm looking at some of these other ones, and I, I just, uh, I don't know. I think, I, I don't like the way it's, the way it's being presented.
I'm wondering if some of those other city codes are before the state mandated?
No, I looked at this one, this, this, this is the new one, this is 2020. I looked at the city's 2017 ordinance before and never amended it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, it's Leslie over here. Um, it's highly likely that some of those cities already have design guidelines in effect, and I don't know that Los Alamos does, I'm looking at Tom. I, uh, when somebody might come in, for instance, for an addition to their home, um, city guidelines might talk about similar roof pitch, similar style, um, you know, you don't want a, a second-story addition maybe coming right up to the face of the existing, um, existing house, you know, primarily one-story neighborhood, that type of thing, and that's why design guidelines are put into place. And so it would make sense and probably easier to address those and place those over, um, the accessory dwelling units as well. Also, if there's a historic district, I mean, that's, that kind of plays in the mix as well. So I'm looking at Tom to tell me whether or not we have design guidelines, I feel like we have this...
We have no guidelines to say what architecture something has to be, or that it has to match the, the front house. However, we do have, you know, certain setbacks, you know, if it's over 25 feet, it has to be setback an additional five feet and things like that, but, uh, they're, they're pretty thin, we don't have a lot of architectural guidelines.
So I think if we placed additional guidelines on the accessory dwelling units only, I think that's where we might find ourselves in a, a bit of a pickle. Um, and also, if I could also just chime in on the, the spacing. Um, the building code does require spacing between structures, so I believe it's five, six feet. So you couldn't, nobody could build three feet next to their primary structure, so there would at least be, uh, required to be a six-foot, six-foot span.
For what, wall-to-wall, or eve, the eve, or what, patio-to-patio? Boy, we're vague there, and we do have, we do have design, uh, specifications in our code. So we're amending our original ordinance, why don't we amend it to add the things we wanted to say? This is our opportunity to amend it before it goes to the state. It's, it's hammering the, the, the sizes that we want, the 850, 1,000, let's be specific on our spacing requirements, let's put in design standards, that, that mirror the design standards with other structures and other buildings that come before the commission, let's treat, we have it, let's just put it into this ordinance. This is our chance to amend it, to, to reflect all this stuff that we've, uh, we've required of builders up until now. Every condo bidding conversion we've, we've had for the last decade, we've required these things of people. Why can't we just bring that into this, you know, within the, within the spirit of the law? So, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to be prohibitive, but I think if we're reasonable and being consistent, um, we can make the argument that, that it's, it's, we're the betterment of the community, I mean, that.
Basic art, maybe just basic architecture with respect to roof line and pitch, roof pitch, and just generalized statements in the guidelines.
I think we have a difference between, you know, R3 and R1 too, so I think some of the architectural elements we can impose in the R3, and R2, or we can't impose in the R1. And I'll just also make a comment about the, the maximum, I, I agree with the 1,000 and 850 maximum, I think we should keep it to the minimum in the code, and I like the discussion with Art and Michael regarding the, you know, keep it with the state findings, except, except for these parameters we're gonna restrict it to, so defer to the city council that we have a hard time making the findings on the certain quality of life issues.
Yeah, I, I agree with that very much, I think we want to limit it, like Victor's saying, um, and, uh, but, but there's, there's no way that, that we can make, I mean, I won't speak for everybody else, but there's no way that I, I can make these findings. I mean, it's just, I, I can't, so unless we can extract that, uh, you know, I don't know what to do about that. Um, but I understand that it's in our interest to, uh, to restrict, to restrict the square footage and to get that into place, um, along with some of these other things that we're talking about. Um, but there's still that, you know, can we extract those findings? Because, because I agree with Art, you know, I, I can't make those findings, and, you know, that's kind of a deal breaker.
Yeah, if, if I may, it, it is somewhat of some mental gymnastics here, but the council would be the one to make those findings. You're recommending an ordinance that contains the findings, so I understand how that weighs heavily on you when you read those findings and think, wow, I, I don't agree with the way that's phrased. But to move things forward, I think, again, a workable solution may be, if there's a will to go forward, to, to include in the motion that planning commission is recommending adoption of the updated ADU provisions as included in the ordinance with, with whatever modifications we discuss or agree on tonight, but with that caveat that the planning commission is not comfortable and would not make the findings in support as drafted in the draft ordinance.
Right, and then, then it's up to the council to make that decision.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I think that's, that's all we can do, right? I mean, I, I think restricting it as much as we can, and then, and then sending that, um, that guidance on, on where we're stuck with the findings would be, you know, that's the only way I could move forward with this.
A hypothetical question, I may? Chair? Yeah, go ahead. Oh, we go to the ordinance, I think it's section E13. This allows the conversion of an existing primary unit to an ADU. So we've always required these developers to come in here with condo conversions to, to adhere to certain parking requirements, setbacks, open spaces, and a number of things, which none of these ADUs have to do. So according to this, you can come in here and convert that condo that we've put all those requirements on into an ADU and completely do away with all the parking, everything that was required of them for, they can just circumvent that by applying this. Cool, so somebody could come in and, and say that their building is an ADU, and we can't control parking density? I mean, it doesn't make sense.
It, it, I don't disagree with your summary of the law.
Michael, this is, none of this is a reflection on you, man.
Okay, no, I, I understand.
Where's the fun in that, come on?
Yeah, I'll, you know, I'll do the scapegoat from time to time, I'll, I'll take it.
Should there be a change?
I'm sorry?
Um, go ahead, Wendy, I'm sorry.
I was gonna just say, there's nothing about this whole ordinance, it's about the health and safety of anybody in our town. It's all about how to make everybody have as dense area as possible, nothing about health and safety. Nothing about the concern, the residents, what they put into the community.
We're ready for a motion, maybe?
Well, we haven't even talked about the, uh, JADUs and the, uh, daycare facilities.
Oh, all right. Go ahead, or whatever.
Well, they're probably the same problems as this one. I've mentioned the one about the possibility of having a large number of children in a, in a, in a lot. But I, what's, what's the, what's the thought here? Are we gonna send this back for some amendments and look at it again? Or what's, what's everybody thinking about, or next step is?
That's what it sounds like to me.
And if we do send it back for amendments, should we give Michael some, some guidelines on what we're thinking about?
I think you would need to frame it in a motion, and that way we'd know exactly what it was that you wanted and what you were voting on, that we got a majority vote. And then we could, um, see if it was something, uh, to the extent that needed to be reviewed again, or you wanted to pass this up to the city council with your recommendations. But I think we start, we start with a motion.
Well, before we do that motion, um, some of the things I would like to see, I would like to see us tailor this as close to the state as we can, as tight as we can, the least amount of density we can, without violating the spirit of the law. I'd like to see design, uh, requirements in here. I think it needs to be clear on a lot of other things too, if this is gonna be ministerial at the counter, we, we need to, we need to hammer out and be as tight as we can, because we don't want the director to be forced or pressured. For instance, uh, it leaves the decision about utility lines, uh, and the ADU have separate utility lines, or they have to be connected to the primary unit, and it's up to the director's discretion. I think we should try to take as much of that burden off the director by putting in writing, putting it in the language of ordinance, so he doesn't have to make a decision like that under pressure. Um, and I think a lot of it has to be added into this, if we're going to, uh, go forward with it. I just see a lot of opportunities for, for there to be inconsistency.
Okay, where are you talking, where are you talking about the electrical lines?
Well, it's just mentioned, I don't know exactly where it was, but I, I do remember it was utilities, under utilities. Look, look for utilities, where's that? And again, I think the discretion, uh, to the director. Help me out, somebody?
To G?
You know where it is, Tom?
The ordinance, yeah, G.
Utilities is G, okay, it's G, um, okay, it's G2, G, G3, no. It's, it's misnumbered, it's, you have 1, 2, 2, it's the second 2. Last sentence, the director shall make determination as whether new or separate utility connection is required. Um, let's not leave it up to the director, let's, let's, let's put the language in here, do we want it, or do we not want it? And if I'm, if there's a reason why we want the director to have discretion, maybe you can enlighten me, but it seems like... can enlighten me, but it seems like we either want them to have separate utilities or we don't. Maybe we need to speak to our public works people about that and have them weigh in on this. Last sentence.
I guess the question I would have for that, and maybe the community development director has insight into this, but is that a, is this a situation where we can anticipate whether it would be required or not? Or is that best left to the director to evaluate the facts of any particular application and make that call?
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I would welcome discussion on that, but it seems to me right now it's, it's, it subjects the director to make a decision they don't need to have to make. It could be written out in the language of the code, maybe with some direction from, again, public works. I've read some of these other ordinances and they, they, they address that. They either require it to be separate or they're required to be part of the primary residence, which, you know, it's double metering or single metering. I don't know, but I think the way it is now, it's, it's loose, it's, it welcomes inconsistency. And I just think we need to be tight on this. It's subject to this. I think a lot of this stuff needs to be tight. Again, what spacing mean, E to E or wall? Public utilities?
I want to jump in here for a second because I, I think we could actually end up belaboring this until midnight tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I, I just kind of want to ring it in. And here's the thing, I, I'm not playing devil's advocate. I, I agree with everything that you're saying and I, I definitely agree that we need to tighten it up. My concern at this point is that I don't feel like we're giving these guys enough direction to do, I mean, we're saying different things that we want to do and there's a few different things, but really, they have to, they have to write this and follow the letter of the law according to the state to the best of their ability. And I know Michael said that this mirrors what the state does or allows, but that we do have the ability, if we can find reasoning behind it, to tighten it up. I don't know if that's going to require a sub, and I don't even know if this is possible, but like a subcommittee that could go in and almost item by item really help draw down what these guys need to write up. Because I don't, I don't know if we just keep throwing things out there. It's, they're going to come back with exactly what it is that, that we're discussing or then we're going to have to go again and again and again. So I, I'm looking for some guidance, but I, I don't, I totally agree with you and I think we need to come up with a plan to tighten it up. And if that means a separate meeting to go through item by item and tighten it up, the language, then so be it. But your thoughts on that, anybody?
I, I, I agree with you. I, I think, I see where Victor's going with this, but in reading that, that under utilities, it, it talks about whether or not there may be a separate utility connection required. That's going to really be up probably to the utility company and, and whether or not the, there's enough capacity on the existing system to require it. And that's, that's a decision that's going to be made probably by the utility. And the only thing that it looks like the state's worrying about is that if we impose a connection fee, are we, first off, are we the ones that impose a connection fee or is it the utility that imposes that? If, if we're imposing it, then they, they lay out, it just has to be proportionate. And then the director has to make the decision as to whether a new or separate utility, whether a new connection is required. Well, I think that's going to be probably dictated by the, whoever the contractor is or whoever the utility is, you know, if there's enough capacity on the existing system, they're going to, you know, I mean, I, I'm not too worried about that. I like the idea of narrowing down, taking that down to a thousand feet and then, and then, and then punting to the commit, to the council, the decision on the findings. I think beyond that.
Well, that's the other thing.
Where, where are we conformity with the state? I mean, other than the, the twelve hundred versus a thousand, and I say knock it down to a thousand and kick it back up to the, to the council and let them make the decision on the findings. And if they have heartburn over it, they can always amend the code to, I guess maybe with ADUs that we don't have to make findings, that we just conform as we, we do it and do it without findings.
On the, on the utilities thing, going back to that section, the second two, the line you looked at, if you go up to one, it says all ADUs must be connected to public utilities, water, electric, sewer, services, blah, blah, blah. Then in the, in the three, it says that the director should make a determination. So I can see right there where developer comes in and he, and he, and he works a director saying, well, you stay up here. Now I can go straight to the, the street. Now you're telling me you're going to make me go to the primary residence? We got problems. I think we need to be consistent, we need to be specific. We need to take the burden off the director, decide here at the commission and the council what we wanted to say, and that's what it says. And that's my opinion.
If I could jump in on that point real quick, and I don't mean to, to beat a dead horse on this one. Subparagraph one says that all ADUs must be connected to public utilities, water, electricity and so forth. That's not really discussing whether that connection is directly from an existing unit or directly from the utilities. It's just saying you have to have actual connections, that we're not going to have an off the grid ADU that's self-contained and, you know, having septic tanks.
I understand that, I agree.
And as to, it's three, it's mislabeled as two, I apologize for that, but subparagraph three, that language as drafted is exactly a set forth in the state statute with one exception. And the only exception is that we've added that the director, we've given the director the authority to, to make that call. Because the only thing the state law tells us is that maybe it will, maybe it won't. And so we've tried to add language that says, okay, well, if a decision is to be made here, who makes that decision?
Right.
So I don't think we could revise it to say all other ADUs must require a new incentive connection or must not. The state law just tells us it may. So that's, I don't want to take all the credit for the inartful drafting on this one. So I want to highlight the language given to us by the state.
Let me, let me also ask, because I don't want to speak for you guys, for Tom and for Michael. I mean, with what everybody here is saying and seems to be agreeing upon, I mean, do you actually feel like you have the information that you need to tighten this thing up to the way that we've had this discussion? I mean, do, do you feel that there's enough there for you to be able to do that and bring it back to us?
I think there's, there's two options and Leslie keyed in on this earlier and may want to jump in again. I think the, the most direct route in my mind is to formulate a motion tonight that gives us guidance to communicate revisions the planning commission would like to see made to the ordinance and wants the council to consider in connection with this recommendation. That's the most direct route and I, I think we have enough tonight that we could move forward with a, with a more robust staff report and perhaps sample language that would accomplish, you know, what you've set out for us. A less direct route would be no actions taken tonight. Leslie, Tom and I, take your direction, try to revise the reso and then, you know, we come back a month later and, and have the, the conversation again, which, you know, we can do that. I'm open to that as well. It's just a question of time and whether the desire is to move forward to council to get this modified potentially.
Right. It, it sounds like the more direct approach with, with commission really not agreeing with the, the current ordinance, letting council make that decision. And then I, I guess within, if, I guess there's two choices at that point, council either accepts it the way it is with hopefully the issues that you've, you know, given to them from us, or do they have the ability to kick it back to us and say, no, we, we're not, we're not ready to adopt this yet. We want to have it tied, you know, cleaned up.
They, they would have both those options. If they, if they would like to send it back down to planning commission, they can certainly do that. You know, some of the things you've mentioned, for example, the, the square footage size, the maximum of one thousand, I mean, that, that's an item that if that's the shared consensus of the planning commission, we can take that direction and have that in the draft that's given to the council.
Right.
So where there's clear things like that, we can, we can put that in and that's what will go up.
I think we're all, I think we're all in agreement on, and at least, at, at very least that. Yeah. I guess commissioners like maybe get your, your feedback on what you think might be the best approach.
I like that.
Go ahead, Art, I'm sorry.
Well, I like that approach that we, that we, if we craft a motion, it would be to approve the ordinance with the change of the maximum to be one thousand instead of twelve hundred and that it be, and that the commission in, in referring it up, in approving that is not approving the findings and that, that would be left to the council to, to add in the findings. If they wish to, you know, if they wish to adopt it at that point. But our, our, our change would be to a thousand square feet instead of the twelve hundred.
Is that the only change that we want to make here? Seems like there's other changes that we need to make.
Well, I think, I think Victor, you brought up, I think you brought up a few and I, I think if, that's what I'm saying. I, I feel like if, if that's the case and we're going to send it up to council, I really think we should hammer out a few of these changes right now and they can go ahead and put that in, in, I mean, otherwise, like I said, I think we're just going to run around and around. I think we just need to know and hammer.
So, so let's talk about that for a minute because I think, I think we mentioned the eight fifty, one thousand item, which I think we're all in agreement on. Victor mentioned the, the, you know, the discretion, right? Well, the spacing, on the spacing, to me, that's a two-way street, right? If you, if you make that distance too long, you can, you can force somebody to put one of these things in a, in an undesirable location, right? A less desirable location on their property, so.
We're already.
I don't know.
Code is, I mean, our, our, ours says ten feet, right, Michael?
The, the existing ADU regulations say ten feet.
Yeah, and it's five feet for code, for, you know, for our standard code. So we're already, we've already bumped that up. I think we just leave it alone.
Right. And if you, if you make it, but if you, but Victor, if you make that bigger, if you make it twenty feet or twenty-five feet or something, you could force somebody to put one of these ADUs in a, in an even more awkward place on their property, right?
It's enough to provide setbacks and other distances. If you, if you make it too tight, they could put two of them back there. If you could put ten feet distance between primary, somebody could conceivably be, put two back there.
I don't think so. No, they can't.
Our, our code would limit the detached to one per residential property.
It stated, it stated that. And where? It's not, I don't see in, in the, in the code. Michael, is it in the government code? Can you point me to it?
That I believe is in our ordinance.
I know, but we're, we're amending ordinance. So our, our ordinance is one and we can get away with that?
Yeah, we can specify that the number, the discussion of the total numbers permitted is, is a whole nother expanse that we can go down, but the simple answer is when you're talking about a, a single family residence, you can have one ADU per property and that could be within the, the frame of the existing or proposed single family home, so an attached ADU or a, a rear yard detached ADU. You can have one or the other, so.
Plus, plus the square footage limits it also.
And a JADU too.
Yeah, because we also, we also have in our code, you can only have a certain percentage of your property covered, right?
That, this changes everything. This changes everything. That's out the window, man. Plus you could put, you could put a JADU in your garage and put an ADU in the back, I think, too, in, in primary residence. Now you've got, you can conceivably have six, seven bedrooms on that property and no parking requirements.
I don't know that that's true. I mean, in, in section F here, it says one ADU or JADU per lot with a proposed or existing single family dwelling. There, and there's some conditions on that, but, but I think, I think it's one, right? So I don't, I don't know that they could do a JADU and an ADU on a single family lot.
You, you can do a J, JADU, which by definition has to be in a single family home and has to be within the interior space of a home. You could, you could have one JD, ADU and then one detached ADU. That's, that's the maximum development capacity under this ordinance. And that's consistent with the, the state guidelines. But you would not find yourself in a situation where you have one or more JADUs within a single family residence, an ADU and a converted garage, and then a newly built detached ADU at the rear of the property lot. You know, you're, you're only going to be able to have, again, one ADU and one.
But I, but I think, but I think what prompted this discussion was that, you know, the ten foot spacing and, and if, if they're going to be able to put these things on their, on their lot, then, I mean, pigeonholing them and making it really awkward for them to do it, I, I don't really see the point in that.
We also have to justify it or else when it goes to the state, they, they throw it out anyway.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, we may force them to put it, you know, closer to a property line than they may want to put it. And that could be, that could be offensive to the neighbors as well. So, so I don't know, I don't really, I, I get what your intent is, Victor, but I don't, I don't really see that that's going to be, that that's going to be productive and it's going to keep anybody from doing anything.
Setbacks in the state law, I think. Michael, the setbacks in the state law, they reduce the setbacks from five feet to three feet, correct?
It's four feet for rear and side yards now.
They reduced them from the 2017 ordinance.
Which was five, I believe.
So there still are setbacks, John, so they couldn't, we couldn't put, I mean.
No, no, no. I, I guess what I'm saying is if somebody wanted to put one of these up and they wanted to put it ten feet from the property line, but that put it, that put it inside of, say, a twenty-foot distance from, from the main structure, then they may be forced to put it four feet away, right, from a property line. It may make them put it in a, in a less desirable position and it's not, it's not preventing them from doing it. They're going to do it anyways, so why not give them some discretion to put it in the, in the best place possible, right? If they want to put it real close to their house, isn't that better than them putting it real close to their neighbor's house? I mean, I think it is. So, so I, I don't, I don't really see a necessity to change that ten feet. I think it's adequate. And then some of the other things that we talked about around design, right, roof lines and things like that. I think what staff told us was, was having those be specific to just this ordinance wouldn't really fly, right? We'd have to, we'd have to add those to our, our general code so that they were fair across the board. Is that correct? Michael, is that accurate? We'd need, or, I mean, we'd want to, we'd want to have those design guidelines be universal, not just specific to ADUs.
We do have in our general code.
Yeah. I think they just have to match our code, right? I mean, like we would say that the design elements have to match our code.
I think, I, and I'll, I'll kick this one over to Leslie because I think she's the one who had the most valuable input on, on that aspect of the conversation. But one thing we need to be aware of is the code may well contain design criteria and guidance, but if that's framed within the context of a discretionary site plan review, that's something that's completely different from what we can do with ADUs. Because we're not afforded the opportunity to run through that qualitative or quantitative analysis. If you have a site plan review where the planning commission has the ability to grant a discretionary approval, by all means, let's give people guidelines and then let's have the commission sit down and really think about whether or not this is the best product for our community. Unfortunately, the way this law is written now, any sort of discretionary review is prohibited. So unless you have design guidelines that are objectively applicable and, and they can be uniformly applied, I think it's potentially problematic and likely to get picked back on.
Let me ask this question then. If you can, if a city cannot apply the, the, the design guidelines that are in its general code to an ADU ordinance, how did this city put design guidelines in? They must have, I mean, they must have drawn them from their general plan, they must have drawn them from the design guidelines they have and they put it in an ADU and we have guidelines. Like, I don't, I don't see how they could have fashioned design guidelines and we can't.
No, I, so I, I don't question that they did that. What I question is whether those are enforceable. You will see examples of those types, that type of language in other ordinances. HCD is still reviewing recently adopted ordinances, so we don't have clear guidance on their position on these items. So if I were, I'm not sure exactly which code you're referring to, but if I were to posit a guess, I would think that they likely carried forward provisions that they had before. And if they didn't, they intended to implement something new. they intended to implement something new to try to maintain, you know, the character of neighborhoods within their city. But I just think those won't be defensible. So, you know, we, it's something we can discuss and something we can put in, but, but my assessment with reading the state laws that, you know, if there's anything that requires discretion or a judgment call by the reviewer, it's not going to fly.
I can get a copy of this to Tom.
That'd be great.
Mi, Michael, so just to make sure that I'm clear, you're saying that if we had language in it that said that the ADU has to match the current design elements in our code, that we, that that wouldn't fly?
Can we, can we discern between two things to make sure we're all talking about the same thing?
Yes.
You have design, a site plan design, and that's when you're looking at setbacks. You know, the, the unit has to be 20 feet setback from the front and the sides and there's an envelope. You can be no higher than X amount of, of feet high, that type of thing. Then there's architectural design guidelines. And the architectural design guidelines will address things such as if you have a Spanish-style house, then your addition also needs to reflect the Spanish style of the house. It should not look like an English Tudor.
Right.
It should be, they should be the same. That would be an architectural design guideline. Those I don't know because I'm not as well versed with our code as Tom is, whether or not we have something like that. The one thing that we might be able to do, and I'll look to Michael because this is, I haven't talked to him about this, is we might be able to put in guidelines that are truly guidelines. You know, the, the accessory structure should be compatible with the architectural design of the primary home. That being said, staff could say, well, you've got, you know, you've got a Spanish-style house and you're doing an accessory unit that's English Tudor. You know, they really should be compatible. And unless the property owner is willing to change it, then we would still have to issue a permit. But we possibly could put in phrases like that that are more shoulds than shall. And we would have no way of, of saying no to the permit, but we could encourage the property owner for the sake of the neighborhood and their property to have something that's architecturally compatible with each other. So I'll look at Tom and ask him, do we have architectural design guidelines in our code?
We changed that with the last general plan to where we have no architectural guidelines for that. Because, because it used to be early California and we took that language out of the code. But I, I'm interested in what Victor found as far as Commissioner Self-Volcanic, as far as architectural guidelines. Which ones are you referring to?
Now, I know the city of Orange has very heavy design guidelines, both within their historic district and outside. So, and their zoning ordinance is chapter 17, so that might, it sounds like something that might have been in Orange. But it could have been anybody else too.
Commissioner Self-Volcanic, you still there?
I think he froze.
Yeah, because, well, he's not on my screen, but.
All right, so frozen image on my screen.
Okay, we lost him.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where he's talking about, but, I mean, there is, there are old codes that we need to change because they're not consistent with our general plan. And those are in the, the early parts of the municipal code, not in the zoning code. Oh, there he is. Commissioner Self-Volcanic, where were, where were those architectural designs that you were talking about?
Well, I know we used to have, Tom, we used to have the old California, I think it was called. And we did away with some of those, but we still have the discretion. And I thought we, we allowed us some guidelines when we, when we reviewed these properties. Everybody brought their elevations in with the different materials and so forth. And I thought we had discretion and I don't know that there's actually, I, I can't, I don't have my zoning code, I don't have my code here. I'll refer to you, but are you saying we have no guidelines at all in the city of, as to?
Well, we have old guidelines that are not consistent with the general plan and they're very, let's see, in section 2.52, it's of the municipal code, it still talks about architectural guidelines, but in, talks about old California. But the general plan has changed that and we just haven't updated that part of the code yet.
Well, for, for, I think we're all in agreement. I, I don't know that we want. So if there was no architectural guideline, I think that's fine. I think the, the, the bigger issue is that the, that the ADU and, and the, the term should, like, whatever, match whatever the architectural design is of the primary location. I mean, that's the bigger, that's the, the bigger deal here. Not, not that it has to be a certain design, because we want it to kind of just blend. If they're going to do it, we want it to blend with what's already there.
Which I think we had in the old ADU code that said that it had to appear to be one building from the right-of-way. Is that right, Michael?
I, I don't recall, Tom, I can look it up.
I, I guess the bottom line is, I think you probably understand where we're going with it as far as what we'd like to see and what, I, I guess we'd have to leave that up to you as far as what you think we can, and I don't, I hate to say the word "get away with", but what you think will, will actually go through without, without posing a problem. But I, I think the sentiment is that we, we would like it to match the existing or the primary dwelling.
Well, well, finding B says that ensures the character of the city residential neighborhood is preserved, so. I mean, that could be argued that we want a consistent design for, to, to match the primary residence, so we're, we're trying to maintain the character. I, I mean, I don't know. It seems like.
No, that, that's, that's along the same lines for sure. Does that, I mean, does that make sense though, Michael?
Yeah, I think that's, that's something we can definitely look at. How it was treated under the previous code. We can look to other examples. I understand that, that Commissioner Self-Volcanic may have an example that he thinks does a, a good job of this and we can, we can look at it and we can make sure that the city council understands that there was a desire on the part of the planning commission to include maybe not mandatory language to the extent it, it, it may not be enforceable, but to include advisory language.
Right.
So that anyone who reads the code can get a sense of what the expectations are in terms of the quality and appearance of, you know, what we'd like to maintain in our neighborhoods.
Well, you know, I may just comment. We don't have that, as a commission, we don't approve a design on single-family homes and that stuff right now. I mean, so we, we, we don't have, we don't have that discretion right now. We only see the multifamily and the larger projects, but single-family homes are approved over the counter by the staff.
Yeah.
Right, but if we have the ability to have them say, you know, like, if there's any way that we have the ability to, to figure out language that would encourage them to make it at least match.
Yes, but let me just finish just for a second. Chair Andre, just simply look at the new construction that is on Howard Avenue, just, just east of Lexington. You have new construction going in on, on the north side and the second lot in on the south side is just a box. A big white box. No architectural interest, nothing. I mean, you know, that, 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 that train left the station years ago with respect to architectural theme in the city. Years ago, years ago. And we finally took it out of our general plan a couple of years ago because, you know, frankly, we're a hodgepodge. And, uh, and I, I think it's just, I, I don't know how you try to plug that into the ADU, especially when you can't, you know, it can't be too mandatory. We don't, we don't, we don't have a theme. We don't have an architecture theme. I mean, it's.
I, I understand what you're saying and again, I, I don't, I don't question that part of it. All I'm saying is, is that if it's going to be a white box, as an example that you just gave, then the ADU should be a white box that matches the, the, the primary white box.
Well, I.
I think that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're grasping at straws because we don't like this whole thing. I think we're
Right, right.
Going things out there because we don't like it. I think the direction we should give Michael and staff who recommend in the city council is that we'd like to, we, we, we don't really like this and we'd like to see it as restrictive as possible. I think that's what we're, I guess what we're going with this.
That's where we're at. Exactly.
Chair Andre, can I add this to it?
Yeah, please.
Okay, this is what the old code said. It said, "An accessory dwelling unit, whether attached or detached, shall be consistent in architectural style with the existing single-unit dwelling and shall be designed so that the property maintains a single-unit appearance from the public right-of-way."
There you go.
Put that language in.
Put it in, yeah.
And that says "shall", and I'm not sure if that's going to hold up, but we can still put it in there, but.
Shall is what holds up, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can still put it in there, but, um, you know, is it enforceable or not?
Thank you. Is, uh, Victor, is there, is there anything else that you had on there that we should have them add?
Well, again, you know, yes and no. I mean, again, I think we should be more specific on certain things like spacing, but I, I mean, that's, those are just minor things. I was questioning, what's the commission considering? They considering approving this, sending it to the council and having them kick it back to us and pay it alike, or are we, we gonna, which require motion, are we going to basically continue this public hearing and let Michael and staff bring us something back? I'm, I'm, I'm clear what, what the thought is here. Because I would rather have continue to have Michael and staff work on it with some of the input we've given tonight and then see it again before it goes to council. Because I, I, I can't vote in, in favor of this the way it is. I just can't.
My, my only concern is, is that it comes back and I don't know that you'll still be able to put your stamp of approval on it based on the, the, the way that the language is because of the state. If, if you, if you think that, if you, if you think that them making some of these changes to tighten it up would give you enough peace of mind to send it to council, or maybe we do that and then we're okay, we know at least that got in there and we still send it to council and say, hey, we don't necessarily agree with the findings, but here, here you go. Uh, uh, that, that's, that's certainly an option and I don't think delaying it a month is, is going to do anything.
I would agree.
A question, Michael?
Go.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I step on somebody?
I was just going to say, I agree with, with Chair Andre. You know, uh, I, I like that language that Tom just read. And I think we could insert that in along with the limitation of 1,000 feet, along with the reluctance or, or that we're not going to vote on the findings and move it up to the council. And then Michael will end up having the same conversation with the council. Okay, and they will have to decide if they want, if they want to make the findings. And then they can make the decision on whether or not they want to leave that language in or modify that language that Tom just read. Where we have a bunch of shals in there. Michael can make his, his presentation to the, to the council and they may say yes. Send it up, run it up the flagpole. If they, if they approve it, great. If they kick it back, then we can always modify it. Let, maybe let the council make that decision. And then go from there.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in support of exactly what Art just summarized.
I have a question for Michael.
Go ahead.
Is he still here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Michael, you, you mentioned a, a body that, uh, we were talking about some language and you mentioned a body that has not completed its review just a couple of minutes ago. What, what body is that?
It, it's the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, the, the state ADU law now requires the city council to share their adopted ordinance with the state for review. And so there's a review and comment period. You, the HCSD, as far as I know, has not returned any comments yet to any cities, although they've received ordinances that have been approved. Uh, but they send comments back and if they recommend amendments, you're required to either make an amendment as directed by the state or make findings explaining why you think they're wrong. And then all this contains with it the possibility that it gets escalated to the state attorney general's office.
So this is a three-part question. That's the first part. Second part is, um, is there a deadline by which we, we, we need to submit our ordinance? And, and the follow-up question would be, can we wait to see some of the comments coming from this body to see what they're allowing, how permissive they're being, how restrictive they're being, what they're, what they're having problems with and letting go, and then we can basically tailor our ordinance to, to, um.
Yeah, I.
You know what I'm getting at?
So, so I, I misspoke and I apologize. I do actually have one copy of comments from HCSB uh, that they did send back to a city and I've used that to inform how we've crafted our ordinance. I have not seen others, so there could be additional comments. To answer your question in per timelines, we have to submit the ordinance within 60 days of adoption to the HCSD. So the timing kicks in once city council takes an action. There's no deadline there in that sense. It's only triggered once we adopt. But we, we are living in a world right now where we have an existing ordinance that conflicts with state laws. So there's potentially some urgency there in terms of wanting to at least get through the process of getting something moving that comports with the updated state ADU law.
I think it would be worthwhile to see what other kind of comments come out of this agency to, uh, I wouldn't want to submit something that we find out later that we could have tightened up or, or fashioned in, in a way more favorable to us. So it would be my desire to, to look at some of these comments before we submit, but again, that's just my feeling. I'm just really, I don't want to put something in the, in the, in the place that we're going to regret later.
We have a consensus from anyone as to, anybody that wants to, I guess, look at making a, a motion to either bring it back or take it to council?
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution with the change, number one, on the, on the size to, a maximum size to 1,000 square feet. Also incorporate in there the existing language that we have regarding the, what, what Tom read, the, what are we going to, the architectural or design.
Right.
Whatever language that Tom read. And that we, uh, uh, and, and that we do not, uh, uh, vote on the findings and that we, you know, send that up, we approve it without, without approving the findings and send it up to the council for their.
For their review?
For their review and, and action.
I'll second it.
It's a point of clarification before we take a vote. The resolution before you this evening is a recommendation on not only the ADU ordinance, but also the small family daycare ordinance. I'm just seeking clarification as to whether this motion is modifying the recommendation as to ADU, but also recommending approval of the small family daycare, or would you like to entertain this motion specific to the ADU and then continue discussion on the small family daycare component?
I would say, as a maker of the motion, I would, I, I would say that for me, and I think that I still have the same problem regarding the findings and beyond that, that's, I'm prepared, you know, if you, if you want to approve that one as well at the same time, but not the findings and send that up to council as well. If we want to do it in one vote. Otherwise, we'll do it in two votes if you'd like.
I think we leave it in one.
Okay. So that, I'll, I'll change my motion to incorporate the item on the daycare, except for the findings.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Oh, we have to do a roll call.
Oh, do a roll call, okay.
So I have Art and then Gross has second. Chair Andre.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Quilty.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Aye.
Commissioner Lo.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
And Commissioners Self-Volcanic.
No.
No, okay. No, okay. All right.
So the motion passes.
Next one.
Okay, moving on. Thank you all, by the way, for your input. That was a really good conversation. I'm glad that everybody took an interest in it and participated. Staff report, number nine, there is none. Number 10, discussion, none. And number 11, items from the Development Services Director. Do we have anything?
No, we don't. We don't. I don't. Just wanted to just emphasize that we are still taking care of the business of the city, even though we are telecommuting. We usually have at least one member of staff, of the planning staff, whether it be Tom or Maria or Michelle, in the office in case somebody drops something off, plans as such, that we can take them in, quarantine them, and then, and then take care of them. Just want to let you know that. Of course, Public Works, you've probably seen them around town. They continue to do their work as well. And just wanted to let you know, in case you hadn't heard, that Gary, who has been with the city oh so many years, over 30 years, I believe, will be retiring on May 7. So due to the pandemic, we're unable to give him the party that he deserves. But he is excited to retire and do more painting and work his music. So we're going to be wishing him well but missing him. And that's all I have.
Very good. And no, no reports of infection in Los Alamitos still, correct?
I believe that there are, but I don't want to speak out of turn. And that is aside from what is at the hospital. I believe that there are.
Okay.
But it was a small number.
Yeah.
The last that I heard.
Okay.
The last I heard was we do have a couple of residents that are positive, not hospitalized.
Okay. All right, commissioner reports. Do we have any?
If you guys haven't paid attention to what the recreation department's doing, I have them on Facebook. And I really think we should all give a shout out to their hard work and the commission. They've done a great job of putting things up for the community to do on a daily basis.
Absolutely.
Speaking of shout-outs, I'd like to thank Marie for all her assistance in helping me plow through this Zoom thing. I wouldn't be here without her, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
We're treating all of us.
Okay, excellent. Anything else?
Be safe, everybody.
All right, yeah, absolutely. Thank you, everybody, for the participation. And yep, stay safe. And we will hopefully, I'm hoping maybe have the opportunity to actually meet in person the next time, maybe?
That would be great.
That would be good.
All right. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.